City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
And President Loleb de la Beau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Say welcome to Counselor Repozo. And welcome back Counselor Joseph Kamara. Nice to see you both. First item is citizens input. We have one person that has signed up. Colin Dyer, 560 Race Street, and the subject is Opera Committee. Three minutes?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and members of the City Council. And thank you to -- congratulations, Mr. Repozo. Welcome back, Counsel Kamara. And I previously wrote a letter to the Mayor's Office about the Mayor's recent allocation of the $3.26 million of opera funding to B.C.E.D.C. And I just want to thank the Council President for talking to the Mayor to respond to my letter in the first place. And I also want to thank the Mayor's Office for answering some of my questions and providing some documentation and for alleviating some of the concerns I had. However, there's still concerns I have, and I just can't wrap my head around, and I hope the Council feels the same way, how one organization can have multiple municipal contracts, not only with the city, but with the RDA. You have the state peer, the community development. And I also can't wrap my head around how the Vice President of B.C.E.D.C. can serve on the same board that approves these allocations of the opera funds, and his organization can also simultaneously receive opera funds themselves. And I understand he did recuse himself, but I don't think that's good enough -- that's definitely not good enough for me. And it's not good enough for me that we have an Opera Committee that's holding these secretive meetings, and not open meetings, not transparent meetings, but closed-door meetings. We have an Opera Committee which has people handpicked by the Mayor without any approval process deciding where tens of millions of dollars of opera funds are going to be used. And I'm disappointed that this Council has not done more about this. And I would ask, and actually plead with this Council, to have this, and I believe it was discussed before, to have this Opera Committee created in ordinance, so we can have some structure and some open transparent meetings, so we can see where and how these opera funds are being used. And Mayor Coogan should not, should not, have full authority to decide where $70 million should be used. There needs to be some sort of collaborative effort. And lastly, I understand every organization who wants opera funds needs to fill out an application, and I asked the Mayor's Office today for B.C.E.D.C.'s application for opera funds, and it looks just like this, and I was denied, which makes me think, did they even go through the process that every other organization would have to go through?
Fifteen seconds.
I just think there needs to be more of a collaborative effort, and we need to see more transparent meetings, and this Opera Committee should be opened up more. Thank you.
Thank you. No further citizens input?
There was a letter. There was a letter by a former counselor that was sent to us.
Madam Clerk? She just said that there wasn't anything else in email unless it was just sent.
Counsel, that letter was sent, was asked that it be sent to you directly?
Oh, okay.
To be forwarded to you.
Okay, thank you.
To the whole Council, Madam Clerk, or just to Counsel of the --
Counsel of the --
Okay, thank you. Item two on the agenda, transfer and appropriation, which is item two under priority matters. We do have a new, you should have a new amended order on your address, Counselors. They just changed the wording on the order. And this is a transfer of $105,408 appropriated to the school transportation from the general fund, free cash. Mr. Pacheco?
Good evening, Counselors. This item was missed by me last year while we were paying bills. Couple of reasons, but no excuses, just it was missed. We verified it all with the vendor and came up with this total as an amount that we both agreed on. So we sent it down to Council. The explanation behind it, okay, is it's called wait time. So basically, we try and tier as many of the bus routes as we possibly can in return for substantial savings. While tiering some of these routes, a couple of them extended past what we normally would have as a wait time in between particular schools. So Cuss and Henry Lord are tiered together. There's almost an hour and a half difference in the time that the bus companies would have to wait. So they're paying those employees, the bus is sitting idle, waiting to start picking up for the next route. We've agreed with the bus company that that's above and beyond what the normal wait would be. Normally, it's about 30 to 35 minutes, they start their routes, and the normal time in between routes is an hour. So this dollar amount accounts for the bus, accounts for the driver, and accounts for the monitor on the buses.
Counsel Dion?
The close of school at Cuss this year is 2:30 as opposed to 3:30 in past years. So will that eliminate this problem coming this year?
No, moving forward, this is built in. But if I can, let me just finish just a touch more, and you'll see the difference. So without tiering at these schools, so one of the tiers is Cuss and Lord. The other tier is Sylvia with Spencer Board and Sylvia with Fontz. This is only typical buses, so this is straight yellow buses, and this is also ELL students that are involved in this particular wait, wait time. The cost without the tiers is $501,120 to keep the tiers out of the system. By putting the tiers into the system, it's costing us an additional $104,000, which is what these bills are. So the savings is more than pays for what we're trying to do here. And overall, across the district with all of our routes, it's a savings of about $2.7 million using the tiering system. So we won't go backwards and take the tiering out, but some of this was adjusting for changes in start and end times. So a couple of our schools used to be extended learning time. Those grants ran out, so that changed the schedules. So the reason why we didn't have these long wait times before was because of those extended learning times. It was a built-in extension on the time that buses, you know, were running, so it also allowed for much closer tiering. When we lost that, we have a lot of schools starting at the same time and ending close to the same time. So we had to make some adjustments on the start and end time, and we configured all of our schools so that we would be able to use tiering as much as we possibly could. So the savings are there. We want to keep using the tiering, because whatever that amount is, whether it's $10.5 million, $11.5 million, we would be adding $2.5 million on top of that to make up for the lack of tiering.
Mm-hmm. So basically, we were looking at a 10% increase as opposed to what it would have been otherwise?
It would have been a much larger.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the Council? Counsel in seat seven, did you have your hand raised?
I did, but Mr. Pacheco answered the question in his comments. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
Anything further from the Council? Counsel in seat one?
Just in terms of the prior year unpaid bills, does this cover all the prior year bills?
This covers everything that, so we have two piles of bills. So we have the bills that were earned, and then we have those that are not. So there are approximately 37 days of non-service last year, the beginning of the school year, and then every Wednesday when we were closed, almost until the end of March. So it covers everything but those days. Those days are still in dispute.
Okay.
As to whether or not we're going to pay those, but this is everything that was earned.
So we may see another appropriation that comes before the Council?
If there can be some kind of agreement between the administration and the bus companies.
All right. With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Anything?
Motion referred full counsel.
It's already in full counsel, Counselor. We'll just have you amend it there. It's item two under priority matters. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
You're welcome.
Item three is a discussion of the fiscal year '22 quarter-two budget report.
Hi, Mr. Iacapone. Nice to see you back here.
Counsel Lee, Edward Iacapone. Mr. Kadim, Mr. Kamara, nice to see you. I'm coming back with you for a short time.
You're making a lot more than I am.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a burden.
It's an enviable position to be in.
Yeah, I suppose.
Does everyone have a copy of the quarterly report? I know Colin was looking.
We do. You're keeping the budget in.
On the chair over here. Anyways, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Edward Iacapone, and I'm working on a consulting basis for the, for the city, mainly through the treasurer and auditors, you know, to make sure that we can keep things going until we can recruit, hopefully, a finance director, you know, full-time, you know? And I've been looking. I'm searching around to see if there are candidates out there that, you know, that are out there looking for the, for the job. We want, one of the things that we've attempted to do is, you know, keep things on track, and this was just printed, the second quarter. I mean, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to really look at it, and if you have any questions, but from my point of view, things seem to be pretty much on target at this point, all right? Now the process will start. The FY, the fiscal '23 budget letter requests to all of the departments have been sent out by the auditor's office, and now we'll really start looking into the details of the budget and keeping our eyes on the traditional hotspots in the budget. You know, for example, Mr. Pacheco sharing that there might be other, a few other bills hanging out there. I wasn't, I wasn't quite aware of that, you know? The good news is, we do have, obviously, we do have the money to pay that, that prior year invoices, so that's the good news.
Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadim?
Thank you, Ed. Welcome back.
Thanks.
It's been a little while. It looked the same.
Been a while, actually. I couldn't remember how to get into the council chambers.
Just a quick question. I was just going through the expenses. I mean, on the expense side, everything seems like it's on target.
Right.
So it's just slightly under the 50% benchmark. Just a quick question, local receipts, it looks like 42.2%. Is that on target based on what you're forecasting? I know motor vehicles, you're not going to have your big commitment until March timeframe, February, March timeframe, and it seems like the marijuana excise hasn't quite hit, but is there any concern with local receipts not meeting gun numbers?
Not at this point. Matter of fact, as, as of today, we just received the good, good-sized money from the host agreements.
Okay, so you did.
From the marijuana, that came in today, and we just got the first commitment, excise commitment, and I haven't seen the dollar amount yet on the, on the first commitment. I know there's a lot of bills.
Right.
You know, $60,000 plus.
So you anticipate we're on track? Okay.
At this point.
Perfect. All right. It's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Pereira?
Ms. Iacapone?
Yes.
I was looking at the local receipts as well with the marijuana excise tax being so low, but you said that they, the host agreement payments were made today?
Part of them, I am, you know.
Do you know what the amount was that came in?
I want to say about $200, $200-plus thousand.
Okay. I mean, I know that we don't want to have an oversaturation of marijuana licenses, but that is a way to generate revenue, and if you have a good product, you're going to sell more. If you don't, you may be out of business. It's just like many of the other businesses we have, and I think as a Council, we need to look at that.
Yeah.
It's something that's legal, it's something that people want, and if it's a product and you can sell it and make money, we're going to make money. If it doesn't work out for you, then you're going to close down. So I think that's something that we really need to look at, because that does generate income into the community. Certainly, you don't want one at every corner, and maybe this Council years ago should have come up with a zoning area for this, you know, this type of business. But, you know, if we're making money on it, I think we're all looking for ways to generate money without going into taxpayers' pockets, and I happen to think that's one of them. But other than that, I don't have a lot on this. I know that you and I have spoken about the money that came in, that we just talked about with Mr. Pacheco, and I had asked if that was money that maybe we could use opera money for, but we couldn't because it was from last year.
And it's a timing issue.
There was a timing issue.
They've since clarified, as you know, they've clarified the use, but if you look at the dates prior to that, they really, Fall River wasn't a candidate for that.
Right. We might have been able to, but thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thanks.
I don't want to say that I'm not happy you're here, I am, but I would like to get our own CFO, and, you know, if you want to work full-time, I have confidence in you and your ability.
Can't do that, no.
But if not, and you're recruiting, trying to recruit, I think one of the problems we have in Fall River is to recruit people, you have to pay people. And you're, you're in this field, and you know what CFOs get around the Commonwealth being, you know, at meetings statewide. Do you think that that is a hindrance for some people that you've tried to recruit?
It's a combination of things. I mean, I, the city unfortunately has received, this is not a secret, some bad press.
Publicity.
In the past couple of years, and that doesn't help, you know? They have access today to all these, it's internet, the news is almost like instantaneous. You know, you can read any newspaper you want and basically pull up records for just about any operation, you know, in the entire state and the country for that matter. But I think that, I think you got to, got to look for somebody.
Combination.
Yeah, a combination of somebody that's got the, a skill set. It might not be 100% in every category, but I think if we can get someone who's got that overall skill set and, you know, got a shot at it.
I thank you for your honesty and your comments. Thank you, Mr. Iacapone. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you. Anything further from the Council? Counsel in seat five, Counsel Lee?
How you doing? Just, just continuing with that talk on recruiting, has, have there been a lot of applicants locally from Fall River, or is what we're looking, what we're seeing right now is outside of the city?
Not really, and actually, we're seeing, we're not really seeing a lot of applicants. The ones that are, that the Mayor has been seeing are, you know, they, sometimes you don't know if they're just trying to feel you out, or they're just trying to use you as a, you know, if they're, if they're applying for more than one position at the same time.
Negotiating with another town or something like that.
The world's changed. And, you know, one of the things is, would be really great is if you could look for somebody internally, you know, that could be, that has some promote, you know, that you could promote, which is always nice if you can, you know, find, find somebody.
Yeah, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. I just want to remind the Council, we are on the FY '22 quarter-two budget report. Anyone have anything on that? Counsel in seat eight, Counsel Repozo?
Hello, sir.
Hi.
Just a quick question. I was looking at the inactive capital funds.
Inactive.
Yeah.
Right.
So is, again, excuse my ignorance here, but is there any way that some of that money can be reallocated to other things, other than the fact that it's just kind of just sitting there, waiting for the sun to come? What can we do with that?
It depends if some of it's been borrowed.
Yeah.
I mean, in some cases, if the money hasn't been expended, that at a point in time, we would need to review it and maybe rescind those authorizations. But if there are funds out there, we'll, we'll look at those. Those are the, all part of that ongoing budget process to look for, you know, to try to clean up your records too, you know? As of today, the city did a credit review. We got the results today. The city's credit rating has been maintained, and there is, there was an opportunity for refunding some bonds, so that's going to be included, and those will be sold in the next couple of days.
Is it possible to get an update on some of these inactive projects?
Sure.
And where they stand?
Absolutely.
Just so we can see what we can do about moving forward?
Yep.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further, Counsel in seat three?
Good evening. How are you?
How are you?
Following up on seat eight's questioning, on page one in the, the inactive projects, it's $460,000 that's idle in that account?
Again, if, if it's a bond authorization account, there might be, it might be that the funds weren't borrowed, and that's what's left in the authorization, so I'll need, I need to look at it.
I know.
I haven't had a real, I've glanced at this report, but the city auditor, I just got it. We just, we just produced it. I just wanted to make sure the Council got it, you know, timely.
Because I know that we've always been told that very often to use idle monies, it has to be for a like purpose.
That's correct.
So the way that these were lumped together, I was just, I was wondering that perhaps it wasn't a fact of borrowed, so they were able to be lumped together, that it would be one lump sum that could be used for other purposes as opposed to like purposes. Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility, yes.
Okay, so that's a significant number, which could be helpful to us. And then my other question is, under revenues on page two, Medicaid reimbursement, is that 0%?
Revenues on the revenues?
A little over three.
Yeah, Medicare reimbursements, I mean, as you know, that's, that, that number is a, is a big number generated by the school department, and, you know, something that we look at, we monitor, we look at it. I don't know why it would be, I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't see anything. It says zero?
Yeah, that's why I found it very curious that it's at 0%. That doesn't make sense to me, but.
Shouldn't be. I mean, it doesn't always come in like on a monthly routine basis. Sometimes it comes in, you know, in chunks, there's a delay.
Right.
Only comes in with.
You would think six months into the budget, there should be a number there.
Yeah, I'll look and see if there's any issue, but I'm, I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
At least no one's brought it to my attention that, that there's an issue.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further? Nothing further from the Council? Thank you, Mr. Iacapone.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Come to order, Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
And President Loleb de la Beau?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Everybody in the chamber, please stand for a moment of silent prayer. Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
The first item before you is a communication from the Mayor and a request for the confirmation of the appointment of Seth Thomas Aitken as the City Administrator.
Second, would it be a motion to confirm, Madam Clerk? Yes. Motion to confirm made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion?
I'll say something.
Counsel in seat three, Counsel Dion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Atkins, and it was, I think, a sincere, positive conversation, and I will be supporting this and am looking forward to his work moving forward. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counsel in seat four, Counsel Kilby?
Thank you, Madam President. We're in seat three, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've, I've known Seth for a number of years. He used to work for the District Attorney's Office, and I think his big asset is his communication skills, and I'm also looking forward to, to working with him. And I want to say congratulations to you and your family, and looking forward to a very productive two years, having you down before the Council, being a conduit between the administration and us. Very good, very good candidate. I yield.
Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Pereira?
I've had the pleasure of working with Attorney Aitken when he was over at the District Attorney's Office, and then I've had the pleasure of working with him here on a few matters, and I find him to be a hard worker. He's an extremely honest individual, and I can appreciate that in the city, the honesty. And he follows through, and that's something that I think all of us as Councils look forward to, when we're asking for information, that somebody follows through and we get the information back, and that's the type of person that Seth is. I'm glad that Mayor Coogan made the selection to appoint him. I think that they would do well together, and I think he will help put a lot of pieces of city government together, get people working together, and get more cooperation between all departments. So with that being said, I would absolutely support this position and wish him nothing but much success. Thank you, I yield.
Counsel in seat five, Counsel Lee?
Yeah, I'm very optimistic about the situation here. I feel it's unique, where we have someone who not only has the qualifications from an educational standpoint, but he has a legal background, which I don't recall, I mean, other people who have been doing this a lot longer than me can maybe relate to me, but I don't think we've had someone with that qualification as a City Administrator for the, for the city before or in recent time. So I think it's going to be a valuable tool, along with the skills that he's already displayed to us in a very short span of time. So I'm looking forward to it, I'm optimistic. I mean, I think we're always going to have our agreements and disagreements from, from each angle, but it's, it's really just a matter of what our efforts are, what we're trying to build the city and, and make it a better place. So, you know, I really do feel that that's what you want to do as well, so I appreciate it. And I yield, thank you.
Anything further from the Council? Counsel in seat six, Counsel Pelletier? Yes.
Six. He left it to me.
Six.
I inherited. I had to say, it was about time we got a City Administrator, and took a little bit of time. I sat down with him, had a few words, good words, no drinking. I sat down with him, had a few words, good words, no drinking. And I, I think he's going to fit, and I think, you know, he's got to get used to the job and what to do, and it's like anything else. You know, you've got the basic, but there's a lot of things maybe you don't know, and I'm sure he's going to learn fast enough. He seems to know a lot already, and I'm hoping that he works out for the city. And we've got him for two years, and he's got me for two years. So I hope we can work together and move everything along. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Kamara?
Yeah, I, I don't know Seth. I've talked to him a couple of occasions. He knows how I feel about him. I've told him, and I just want to congratulate him, not just for being appointed, but I think he's going to get a nine-nothing vote, which is something that, you know, doesn't very, happened very often in this chamber. But congratulations. We're also looking forward to working with you, and best of luck. Your success is the city's success. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything from Council Ait, Council Seate, Council Reposo?
Wishing you the best of luck. Looking forward to working with you. I yield.
Anything further? Councilor in seat three, Vice President Dion?
Yeah, and I just want to say that he's living proof that Fall River can find and hire people for appropriate positions. And thank him for wanting to work with us. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Thank you. I've also had the opportunity to meet with Seth and have some pretty honest and humorous conversations. Also looking forward to working with you. And Councilor in seat two is right, this, this might be a, a big moment if you get a unanimous vote here. So we have a motion to confirm from Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pereira. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call?
It's not necessary.
Let's have one anyway. Roll call? Okay. On the motion to confirm, Councilors Kadeem?
I don't want to disappoint, so yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
And President La Liberty Laboe? Yes. Seth, if you want to go, I think the councilors might want to congratulate you. Thank you.
I'm very happy for him. And for us. I'm happy for us. He's really a good guy.
Congratulations. Lucky day. I love you, Tim.
Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
Item number two is the mayor's request for the transfer of $105,000, $105,408 fee, and the same is hereby appropriated as follows, from the FY 21 surplus revenue to the unpaid bills account for FY 21. This, we did receive an updated appropriation order late this afternoon, so if it is the council's wish to adopt this order, it would be adopted as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Does Madam need a two-thirds vote on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call?
On adoption as amended, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
And President La Liberty Laboe? Yes.
Item number three is the quarterly budget report for FY 22.
Should adopt and place on file?
So moved.
Motion to adopt and place on file made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted.
Excuse me. Item four is the five-year capital improvement plan.
Motion to refer to finance?
Second.
Motion to refer to Committee on Finance made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have the mayor's five-year financial forecast?
Motion to refer to finance?
Second.
Motion to refer to finance made by Council Kadeem, seconded by Council Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Whereas the city of Fall River has had increasing citizen concerns regarding water quality, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene quarterly to review and discuss the overall condition of the city water supply.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. The sponsor of the resolution, Council Lee?
Yes, just, just, just real quick on this one, specifically, we, we got hit with some news over, it was about maybe a month or two ago, about the water quali, quality, and it sort of, sort of caught people by surprise. And in those meetings later, we ended up speaking with Jim Terrio, and he said back in the day, there was regular meetings between the body that he was on and the subcommittee, which is the one I chair, Health and Environmental Affairs. I am wide open to this body being fully informed if they want to make it a full council rather than my subcommittee. I'm, I'm open to any of that kind of discussion here. But the way I would like this set up is to just have them meet us, meet with us, you know, three or four times out of the year, give us, give us the information we need, and if there's anything pertinent that needs to come to the full, full council from it, we'll do so. So just, just business and just being informed on the quality of the water. I think it's a topic that, you know, it's important to the city, and people want to stay up on it, so. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat seven, Council Pereira?
I think it's a good resolution, and we were together when Mr. Terrio, who's a member of the board, talked about the fact that they would come and speak about the water quality, et cetera. But I'd like to add an amendment to this to discuss the water quality and the water filtration plant. I think that there's an issue at the water filtration plant with lack of manpower, lack of management, equipment, that if we could get something like that, and if there's something at the committee level that we think needs to be brought to finance or needs to be brought to any other committee, that we can do that. So I would just like to add an amendment that, you know, to discuss water supply and the water filtration plant.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? The motion to amend by, made by Council Pereira, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Lee. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilor in seat six?
You know, we go back to getting people to work, and you've got to have special licenses down there, and you can't get anybody to work. And if they do come down here, it's like a training camp, then they leave to go someplace else. And you've got to find a way to keep the people there with the special licenses. And you've got that Mr. Philin, where, you know, he's been up there, he does a good job, I think, but I don't know if he's looking around somewhere else. But it seems to me sometimes that we don't give them the monies that they want, and, and then they leave, and you've got somebody new, and you've got to give them more than you were giving that guy. So it's time to evaluate what he gives and what he does to make sure that he gets paid what he should be paid. Because he's down there, and he does a lot of work for the city of Fall River. He knows the in and outs of what's going on. And I hate to see him go and get somebody else. And I think it's, it's a valuable asset to have him, and I'm just saying, we shouldn't lose him. If it comes down to money, that's what we should do. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat five, Council Lee?
To Councilor's point, water rates and sewer rates have been raised, what, nine consecutive fiscal years? I mean, what more can we do at this point? I yield.
When we're on the
I'm sorry.
resolution in front of us, which is the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene quarterly to talk about the condition of the water supply?
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further from the council on the resolution as amended? Councilor in seat six?
You just got to pay for what you get. That's it. That's the way it goes. You're the counselor. I'm the counselor. You've got to take the tough votes. That's it. I mean, it's got to run. You want water? You've got to pay for it. You want good water? You've got to pay for it. You want a good help? You've got to pay for it. That's what it's all about. You can sit here, I don't want to raise it, I don't want to do this, and, and then you don't have anything. You, you, you lose everything. That's not the way to do it. And that's what we should do. Make sure we keep our help. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, is there any more discussion on this resolution?
No.
Council Lee, you're the chair of this, so other than you ensuring that you schedule this quarterly, Madam Clerk, none of our other committees have a, a standing rule in, in a committee, do they?
They have.
To have, to make sure that this happens? Or is it just up to the chair? Just up to the chair?
Yeah.
It's the chair's resolution. It's the chair's resolution.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we have a meeting?
But if he's not the chair, then... Anything further?
You have the amendment, though, right? No, he'll schedule it when he can.
And if, and if there's another chair, then they'll schedule it, so.
Do you have the amendment, Madam Clerk?
You have the amendment, but you just need to vote on the amendment.
All in favor of the amendment?
Are we voting on the amendment? Just the amendment, Council?
Okay. Do you want to read it, Madam Clerk?
So it would be, be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene quarterly to review and discuss the overall condition of the city water supply and water filtration plant?
Motion. Motion to adopt amended?
As amended.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Yeah, I've already seconded it.
Yeah, we already have that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt.
And we need a motion to adopt as amended, made by Councilor Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Council Lee. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted.
Whereas the city of Fall River has received multiple requests from citizens to increase and improve transparency regarding public safety, now therefore be it resolved that the administration consider implementing the use of body cameras by the Fall River Police Department to increase transparency and to further protect both the citizens and police officers in any disputes.
Just, so the councilors aware, I did reach out to the mayor and interim chief Goffin about where the city and the police department were at with body cameras, so you should all have a update from the chief on your desks on exactly where they're at and the costs and, and how those will be funded. The sponsor of the resolution, Council Lee?
Yeah, I normally don't like to hold the floor too long, but I think this is one where I just feel like I have some things to say here. This was something that I was, even last year, when, with Chief Cardozo, when he was, when he was the chief of police, and there was a pilot program being offered by, to be funded by the CDA. There were, there were a lot of, there were a lot of barriers to getting it done, and unfortunately, it wasn't even done. And I actually remember seeing Mayor Coogan during a State of a Union, a State of a City address, say, publicly say that it was done, that there was going to be this pilot program, but it never actually came to pass. It's, it's, it's a topic that I think now has a lot more emotion behind it, because I went to a rally recently for a gentleman named Anthony Harden, who was, who was killed in a, in a, in a police dispute. And, you know, their family presented a lot of issues, a lot of issues relating to a lack of transparency. And regardless of whether or not the information in the DA's report is accurate or not, we won't know anything if we don't see things for ourselves. You know, we had, we had situations last year, world, you know, nationwide. People were still at odds, on, on, at odds with each other, even with camera footage of, of, of the killing of an individual in the street. We're still going to have these disputes. I think that's not going to resolve all of it, but I think it brings us closer to transparency when we have body cameras in these situations. I think it just brings us closer to what we need. And transparency and accountability is the key element to public safety in general. So one of the barriers that came along the way is the fact that I'm a city council. We're all city councils here, and we don't have the ability to negotiate with the, the police union on body cameras. We don't have, matter of fact, there's a lot of things we can't do because we have to be careful of violation of CBA rules. So when I put this resolution together, I had to keep those things in mind. I actually had conversation with, with people from HR and legal to make sure that this resolution wasn't, you know, influential in any kind of way. And the way to do this, I believe, is to look at the advocacy part of our job as city councils. Not the legislative, necessarily the legislative or the financial part of our job, but the advocacy part. The part that we reflect what the constituency would like to see. I had multiple people at this rally, and way before this rally, come up to me and say, what's the city council doing? What's, what can the city council do? And I had to give them the information that our hands were tied based on legalities. However, we can, as a body, reflect what they want to see. We can let the city know, our constituency know, that we support this. Money has come down. Grant money has come down from, you know, to over $200,000 has come down the line. Fortunately, we had a really good conversation with the current chief, who is, who was, you know, proponent for these things as well. I haven't seen a lot of, I haven't seen a lot of static against it outside of the negotiation part of it. So I'm hoping to see this, and I'm hoping that the council reflects what, what people want to see as far as body cameras go. And this, this resolution ultimately is just an opportunity for us to advocate for this, and to let, let them know where we stand. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Council Kilby? Council Kilby?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely be supporting the resolution. The mechanism for funding is there. However, as Council Lee stated, union agreements have to be in place. They're still in the negotiation with the superior officers and also the rank and file of the police department. So I think it's good to adopt this, get this on the books, possibly even refer to public safety. I know that Council Kamara is that committee, so when the negotiations with the, the police are accomplished and done, then we can have a meaningful conversation in terms of how it's going to be implemented. So I'll definitely support the resolution. I think it's a good one. And, you know, my heart goes out to the Harden family also, and, and the Mack family. Eric Mack, I've known for many years, and it's a tragedy all around. Law enforcement's very difficult, as we all know, very challenging, and some things don't go over perfectly. So I don't want to say too much about that, but I'll definitely support the, the resolution and have the debate go further. Not to repeat, but once the negotiations are settled, Council Kamara can decide whether to have a, a meeting to, to go over the specifics. So I'll amend it to have referred to public safety.
Is a motion to amend to have it also referred to the Committee on Public Safety? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Council Lee?
I'm sorry, jumping. I, I wanted to just make sure that we, when we do make this referral, that it could be a public safety issue, it could also be a financial issue as well. I mean, I think we're going to be talking about, because one, one of the things on a grant is that it doesn't support storage, and I think we need funding to support the storage piece of this. So this could, this could land in a, in a, in a couple of subcommittees when we talk about the finances part of it. But ultimately, I, again, I want to repeat that this is an advocacy, that, that we as a body letting the public know that we support body cameras, period. That's, that's ultimately where I, that, that's where I was trying to accomplish with the, with the resolution in the beginning, because I know later, once the money comes down the line, that we are going to need to have financial discussions about this as well. I, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat two, Council Kamara?
Thank you. If it goes whatever committee, finance or public safety, we will have those meetings right away. And I'm glad that Councilor in seat five did mention that there is additional financial burden on the taxpayers for this. And not that it's a bad thing, it's something that we need to consider. Because as my colleague in seat six just said, if you want clean water, you have to pay for it. If you want good people working there, you have to pay for it. Well, if you want to protect and have body cams so that we can get the full story of what's going on, you have to pay for it. And he's right, there was a grant that's going to give us money to purchase the cameras, but a lot of the money that's going to be needed for this is to consider the data, and it's going to be costly, it's not free, we're going to have to pay for it. So I'm willing to see what the administration wants to do. I know they've already started, and hopefully we'll see what works with the unions and negotiations, and we'll go from there. I don't think we should shot, stop, jump the gun. I think we should wait and see what happens with everything, and then we can just see how it works out with the unions and the administration, and then we can take it from there. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Council Pereira?
Yeah, I, I don't think it's just saying we want body cameras, as some people have said. And I had talked to former Chief Cardozo about this when it first came out, because we got like 201,000 in a grant. And he was talking to, I believe it was Axon Company. And that company would provide us X amount of cameras, they would take care of the maintenance of the cameras, they would store the camera. They would store the camera. Now, they had it as unlimited, but you can store for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, or unlimited. So, you know, the storage would be stored in the cloud, as they say. But there really needs to be a policy because also you have the grant this year for that money. And we may get other grants coming down. But he said it would cost, it was a five-year grant, and for years two, three, four, and five, it would be about $250,000 a year to do that. So that's like one and a half million dollars over the next four years to get that done. But there's also the extraction of, if you have a body cam on and you want to see about this one incident that happened, you have to have somebody in IT extract that part of the, of the video of the footage. Is it going to be the DA and prosecutors going in asking for footage on things? Is it going to be defense attorneys going in and asking for footage? Is it going to be the general public asking for footage on something? And who in the police department is going to handle that? But the one thing that I looked at too, because when I saw this resolution, I thought about, what about tasers? And, you know, in here, what Chief Goffin said was another piece of that was tasers, that they were incredibly low on tasers, and they will not conform to automatic activation with the curry, the current body cam, body cam that's worn. So you can't have a camera on if you have a taser. I mean, I was talking to the officer that's here tonight and looking at, you know, the mirage of equipment he has around him and now a camera. And I said, you have a taser? And he has a taser. That weighs about 30 pounds extra of everything that police have to bring with them today because people don't listen. Police officer says, stop, you stop. Show me your ID. Show them the ID. But, you know, everybody kind of gets crazy sometimes, and things end up happening. Good officers, good police officers want to work with good police officers. No good police officer wants to work with a bad one. I think that body cams would be helpful for the police, for the public. But, you know, just like Counselor Lee saying that he went, you know, to a service that they had, I think people deserve answers. You can't have, you know, hear two different stories and wonder what happened to your loved one. I don't think that's a lot to ask for. People want the truth. But the truth of this is that you also need, right now, we're negotiating with the superior court officers. There's not, negotiations haven't even started with the patrolmen's union. They're going to want more money for having this. Maybe if it's only a 30-second delay on the camera going on, or 60, the, the camera goes on before the camera goes on. And maybe if they didn't have that, then they would take less. I mean, you've got to barter with them to see what you can get. But I think we first have to come up with what the policy is going to be. And there is a committee that's been formed. There's a neighborhood leader on it. I think Father Jay, as chaplain from the police department, is on it too. So they've had meetings already.
What committee is that, Counselor?
Huh?
What committee is that?
It's a committee to look at the body cameras. A committee was set up when Chief Cardozo was here. Then he left, and Chief Goffin came in. So I don't know where that's at, but they are looking into it. But I just think people want an answer.
Do you yield, Counselor?
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on the amendment? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Madam President. Just on the, the referral to committee, I guess I'm just a little confused. And I'm all for supporting and making a statement that we support body cams, but there's a lot that goes into it. And quite frankly, I appreciate the, you know, the resolution that's before us. But again, as a counselor, I get a little concerned when we're outside of our scope. Okay? Everything we just talked here tonight is completely outside of the scope of the legislative body. We appropriate and we create ordinances, right? We have nothing to do with policy. We don't execute body cams. We don't do negotiations. We've got a document here from, from the police chief that states that we have a grant for, which typically just covers the, the equipment itself, which would be a 60-month lease. Then there's also additional cost associated with storage that's going to cost roughly, according to Chief Goffin, 200 and, just under $220,000 over a five-year period. So that's just part of the cost, right? So it's really up to the administration to come down with a full package in terms of what the cost looks like, what the negotiation pans out to be with the superior officers and the patrol, because there's a lot that goes into it. We don't create policy. That's not within our jurisdiction. And there's, there's a lot of policy that absolutely needs to go into the body cams because, you know, a lot of our officers are, you know, responding to medical calls. And when you're on a medical call, you can't have your camera going because if you're storing the camera, that's all, you know, HIPAA law violations and things of that nature. And then, you know, those conversations don't take place here. So I know there's a, a motion to refer to, you know, a city council committee, but I don't know that we have any say. We can't be talking about policies. We can't be talking about negotiations. And, you know, and, and I support it. I support body cams. But then the question comes out, you know, and, and this is a real discussion. We just heard it. We want to know cost to the taxpayer. Well, I support body cams at a cost, okay? I'm all about accountability. However, with the police reform law, we know body cams are coming down. What is the cost going to be when we get into negotiations? And that's not taking away anything from the police officers who have to go through and there's a impact bargaining because there's a change in work conditions. But if you're telling me it's going to cost me another $200,000 that's going to be rolled into a contract year over year, then I'm not going to support that. If we know it's going to be mandated in the near future, right? So those are the conversations. But those conversations need to be had at the administration level, and that needs to be filtered down to the city council in terms of what the total cost is going to be. Cost-benefit analysis, policies, you know, obviously dictated to us in terms of what they've agreed to with the patrol and superior officers. And then from that standpoint, we can have conversations. I, I think, you know, again, I support the resolution in saying that as a counselor, I support body cams. But again, there, there's so much more that goes into body cams than just having police officers walk around with a camera, you know? So those, that, that work, though, does take place at administrative level and not at the city council. So with that, I'll, I'll support sending something. I just don't understand the need right now to be able to send all this stuff to, to a committee where we really don't have the jurisdiction to, to even start working on these items.
I would agree with you, Counselor. I would, the motion was to send it, the amendment was to send it to public safety. And it's probably something that best belongs in finance so that when they do have a package, that's where the conversation could take place.
Yeah, I just, at some point, we've got to allow the administration to do their job, right? So we're not the administration. And when the administration doesn't do their job, then we can, we can be vocal and we can, you know, take our stance. But let's just trust the process and let the administration do their job. And we've got a letter from the chief that would suggest that, that they are already going through that process. So I, I don't want to take anything away from them. I don't want anybody thinking that we're going to sidestep the administration in any way. So, you know, as my colleague in seat two has said, you know, I'd steal it from him, no pun intended, but we don't want to jump the gun on this, right? So let's make sure the process plays out, and let's just remember our, our role as legislative. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven?
Yeah, I just have one question. Somebody may know the answer to. But from the date, from the date that we received the grant, because the city had to apply for the grant, from the date that the grant was received, do we have to have a policy in place within six months?
That was in here, Counselor.
Yeah, that's in, that's in the first paragraph of the chief's letter.
So does anybody know the date that the
December 3rd.
policy was approved? December what?
December 3rd, right in the very first paragraph.
Okay. So that's the date that we got it. That's the contract date from the grant. So it's six months from then. So they have, you know, May, June to come up with, and that'll be right around budget time anyway. But at least then, you'll know. And they've had time to negotiate with the patrolmen's union because they're, they're still doing it with the superiors now. And then we'll see what the final cost is going to be. There's a lot of cost to this, but if it means that people are going to be safer, then we pay for it. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Camara?
Yeah, I think the motion should be referred to finance. And if and when it comes down from the administration, we'll all be in finance, and we can discuss it then.
Second.
So we have a
Yeah, that's good.
A motion to, do you want to withdraw your motion to refer to public safety, Counselor?
You do.
Counselor Kilby, yes?
Yes, yeah. I have to listen to Counselor Kadim. Makes total sense, and Counselor Camara as well. So I don't know if I got a second to my motion to amend.
You did.
So.
Just withdraw it.
Just withdraw it.
And I think it makes sense to, to have it go to finance.
Refer to finance.
A motion to refer to public safety has been withdrawn. Motion to refer to Committee on Finance made by Counselor Camara, seconded by Counselor Lee.
Yes.
On the motion?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, roll call. I'm sorry, on the amendment, Madam Clerk?
A motion is to refer to the Committee on Finance. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Camara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Repoza?
Yes.
And President La Libbidi-Labo?
Yes.
Do you have the police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Repoza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Vice President. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The 2022 schedule of city council meetings for the
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion?
Can I make a change on one?
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pereira?
Um, yeah, the meeting in February, the 8th. Can we change that to the 1st?
So you're away in February. We talked about possibly if the council, it's the will of council to change the February meetings to the 1st and the 15th, rather than the 8th and the 22nd? In the form of an amendment? Did you want to do them both at the same time, Counselor?
I'm, I'm going to be away on the 8th, so if we can change it, fine. If we can't change the 8th, I mean, I don't care what the other date is. If we can't change the 8th, so be it. I won't be here on the 8th, but
I won't be here on the 1st because I know that the agenda is second and fourth.
So we have a, a motion to amend made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor
No, he's not going to be here on the 1st.
Correct, but you still have to put it in the form of a motion, Counselor. Or do you want to withdraw it?
What are the dates?
Just a question. Is it possible, Madam President, to have one meeting in February?
We only have one. We only had one in, in January, Counselor. I'd rather not.
We can do the 15th in the last week of February.
So by ordinance, we are the 2nd and 4th Tuesday. That's the 8th and the 22nd. Counselor in seat seven is not available on the 8th. Counselor in seat two is not available on the 1st.
We could do the 15th in March for us because March has five weeks.
That works.
So that puts us not having counselors, just so we know. Madam Clerk, do we have anything? So we're in the 18th now. That makes us not have a council meeting for three weeks. Do we have anything that's going to be expiring, Madam Clerk? Any licenses that we need to consider? I don't know if the administration has anything coming down that's time-sensitive. I'm just not sure that we want to go out three weeks.
We've sent out notices for auto
I understand, but in, in all fairness, if the council knows she's not going to be here, and I know I'm not going to be here, and if there's something that's urgent, you could always hold a special meeting on one of the days that take care of it if we're not here.
Good. Madam Clerk, what were you saying?
We've sent notices for auto body and auto repair. Those consistently expire on, throughout the, the month, but offhand, I don't know, without checking files, whether or not they'll expire.
So the mo, the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselors, would be to change the February meeting dates to the 15th and the 22nd. Be to amend the dates to the 15th and the 22nd.
Just point of, point of information, so was there any public hearings that have been advertised?
No.
Okay.
We don't have a public hearing scheduled.
Just so we don't have to reschedule the public hearings.
Would just be licenses, or if the administration has anything they're planning on sending down, it'd be a three-week wait. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor in seat eight?
Just to clarify, what, what's the, the ordinance, second and fourth?
Second and fourth, yes.
Should be, should follow that? Make sure that we do that? I understand the situation, but we should really follow that ordinance as it's written?
Thank you, Counselor. On the amendment, roll call, Madam Clerk?
What is the amendment?
So what's, can we just
The amendment is the 15th and the 22nd.
Thank you.
So the meeting dates would be the 15th and the 22nd in February.
Okay, this would change the February dates to February 15 and February 22nd. Counselors Kadim?
No.
Counselor Camara?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yeah.
Repoza?
No.
And President La Libbidi-Labo?
No.
The motion carries.
Motion carry or fail?
The motion carries. So it would be the 15th and the 22nd. So we need a motion to adopt as amended?
Yes.
Motion to amend?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call?
Yes. To adopt as amended. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Camara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Repoza?
Yes.
And President La Libbidi-Labo?
Yes.
We have a light order in front of 99 Berlin Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion, second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Any discussion? Seeing not. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Have a number of claims?
For the corporation counsel. Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Repoza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 14 is a communication from a city resident regarding Battleship Cove.
Motion accepted and placed on file made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Any discussion? Any discussion? Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pereira?
I did speak with Chrissanne Tyrell, who works down at the battleship. She has responded to this individual, and there is also a follow-up letter going. The email was sent, and a couple of councils, I believe Counsel Lee and myself, had sent it out to her. So, they're doing so. Again, the battleship needs repair. It comes down to the money. You need money to repair it. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five.
The person, the person who wrote the letter, I've known for a very long time. And she actually sent it to, she put it on Facebook and sent it to me and Counselor, at the time, Council President Ponti, to do something about it. And Chrissanne was the first person I thought of to try to put her in contact with. I felt like that was the appropriate person to at least start. And fortunately, I believe, I know I'm on the committee for, what's the committee?
Economic Development and Tourism.
Yeah, Economic Development and Tourism. So, I think that I'm going to, I think this is where we'll probably land, and this conversation will land at one point after, you know, after some time. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? The motion is to accept and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 15 is a communication from a city resident regarding ARPA funds.
Motion accepted, placed on file.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Repouzo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 16 is an open meeting law complaint from a, from the January 3rd inauguration.
Refer to corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel, made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Repouzo. Any discussion? I just want to point out, I did read this open meeting law violation, alleged violation. Mr. Higgins seems to be on a media tour discussing them. It's to the city council and myself as president, but we weren't involved in this meeting, and it was open to the public. His main concern is that it wasn't open to the public, and it certainly was. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So voted.
Item 17 is our planning board minutes for their October meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion accepted, placed on file, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
18 are minutes of the planning board's December 8th meeting.
Motion accepted, placed on file.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Motion to take items 19 to 23 together.
Motion to take items 19 and 23, 223 together, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And 19 through 23 are minutes of the city council. We have public hearing of December 28th, Committee on Finance of December 28th, regular meetings of the city council for December 14th, December 28th, and the meeting and organization of government from January 3rd, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Items 19 through 23, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Repouzo?
Just a quick question on the letter sent to National Grid. Madam City Clerk, have you received a correspondence from them yet in regards to that letter?
No, we have not.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
And lastly, after the agenda was prepared, we did receive an open meeting law complaint alleging a violation of the, of January 13th. Yes, January 13th, alleging a violation regarding minutes that were listed on our agenda.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel. Second.
Second. Motion to refer to corporation counsel, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Repouzo. Any discussion? I did speak to the clerk about this. It's the way, and his complaint is that the items on the agenda aren't listed, but they are listed. It is the full agenda. And I also did reach out to Attorney Aiken, City Administrator Aiken, earlier today to ask how many complaints have been filed against the city council. There were six filed in 2020, and four in 21, and six in 2020. None of them were valid. And four in 21, I think we said you would make changes on two things. Correct?
Madam President?
Sure.
The six in 2020, there were more than six, but those were answered in 2021.
Got it.
So, that's why we have responses to 10 total. Four filed in 2021, six filed in 2020, all resolved.
Thank you. And I just want to point out that anybody is able to file any complaint at any time. It takes an awful lot of time for our law department, and most of them have, a good portion of them, almost 100% of them have, have, have there been no findings. So, refer to corporation counsel. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Motion adjourned.
That's all we have. Motion adjourned, made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Meeting is adjourned.